Mic check, one, two.
Testing, one, two, testing. Testing, one, two, testing. Testing, one, two, testing. Testing, one, two. Testing. 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 Testing.
The changers.
Three, two, one. That mic check, one, two, three. Testing the microphone for the Zoom call. No, can't hear, okay. Okay, uh, mic check, one, two, three, mic check, one, two, three, checking strength and clarity. Um, we go over here. Yeah, mic check. Two, three, four. Yes, we got that up.
Well, good evening, everyone. We apologize about the delay in starting. We had a closed session and the council had to get, conclude that meeting to get down here, but thank you for your patience. We are glad to see everyone who's joining us in the audience, those who are joining us virtually. We welcome you. At this time, as with every meeting, we start with the invocation. Ask that Assistant Pastor Dirk Henigan from Mount Sinai Baptist Church, Pastor Henigan could meet us at the podium. All right, ask that I would please rise for the prayer. Immediately following the prayer, if we could repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for allowing us to see another day. Father God, ask that you please search our hearts and forgive us for all of our sins. Clean us up, Lord, and make us anew. Tonight, Lord, ask that you bless us all with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, but most of all, give us the ability to have a clear mind to make good decisions for this city. We ask that you please continue to put a hedge of protection around us so we can love one another and continue to do great things in your name. We ask all these things in Jesus' name, that everyone say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good to see you, Assistant Pastor, Pastor Henigan. We know you're here on behalf of Mount Sinai Baptist Church, a very familiar and present stakeholder and partner of ours on Murchison Road. You want to tell us a little bit about yourself and the church and ministry?
Right now, the church is getting ready to gear up for hurricane season. Last year, we played a very important role as a small hub for this community. So this year, we want to do something bigger and better. So when the storms get ready to come, and they will come, we will be ready to assist everyone who needs help.
Well, we appreciate that and tell Pastor Jamel we say hello.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. And also, before we get started, I'd like to acknowledge County Council Chairman Kurt Devera is in the audience. Good to see you, Mr. Chairman. Any other elected officials? Make sure we don't miss anyone. All right, well, we welcome you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, at this time, we will move to our announcements. Do we have any announcements? Huh? Where's Judge Whitfield at? Elected officials, how you doing, Judge? Let's give our elected officials, Chairman and Judge Whitfield, round of applause. Thank you. All right, now, you hiding back there, Judge. All right, as we move to the next, we have some very special presentations tonight. We will start with the two proclamations, and then we have another very special presentation. So the National Public Safety Telecommunication, Telecommunicator Week asks that members of the City 911 staff, the representatives, if you can meet me at the podium at this time. to get conclude that meeting to get down here, but thank you for your patience. Uh, we are glad to see everyone who's joining us in the audience, those who are joining us virtually. We welcome you. At this time, as with every meeting, we start with the invocation. Ask that Assistant Pastor Dirk Henigan from Mount Sinai Baptist Church, Pastor Henigan could meet us at the podium? All right, ask that I would please rise for the prayer. Immediately following the prayer, if we could repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for allowing us to see another day. Father God, ask that you please search our hearts and forgive us for all of our sins. Clean us up, Lord, and make us anew. Tonight, Lord, ask that you bless us all with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. But most of all, give us the ability to have a clear mind to make good decisions for this city. We ask that you please continue to put a hedge of protection around us so we can love one another and continue to do great things in your name. We ask all these things in Jesus' name, that everyone say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good to see you, Assistant Pastor Henigan. We know you're here on behalf of Mount Sinai Baptist Church, a very familiar and present stakeholder and partner of ours on Murchison Road. You want to tell us a little bit about yourself and the church and ministry?
Right now, um, the church is getting ready to gear up for hurricane season. Last year, we played a very important role as a small hub for this community. So this year, we want to do something bigger and better. So when the storms get ready to come, and they will come, we will be ready to assist everyone who needs help.
Well, we appreciate that and tell Pastor Jamel we say hello.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. And also, before we get started, I'd like to acknowledge Cumberland County Chairman Kurt Devera is in the audience. Good to see you, Mr. Chairman. Any other elected officials? Make sure we don't miss anyone. All right, well, we welcome you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Council, at this time, we will move to our announcements. Do we have any announcements? Where's Judge Whitfield at? Elected officials, how you doing, Judge? Let's give our elected officials, Chairman and Judge Whitfield, round of applause. Thank you. All right, now, you hiding back there, Judge? All right, as we move to the next, we have some very special presentations tonight. We will start with the two proclamations, and then we have another very special presentation. So the National Public Safety Telecommunication, Telecommunicator Week. Uh, ask that members of the City 911 staff, the representatives, if you can meet me at the podium at this time? Mayor, if I could also ask Lisa Reed to come forward too?
Thank you.
Lisa? Yes, I did, ma'am. Come on up. Come on.
Whereas the week of April 13th through April 19th, 2025, National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week will be held to honor 911 telecommunications across the nation for their commitment, service, sacrifice to the public 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, their safety of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained by telecommunications from citizens who call 911. And whereas telecommunications are in the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, ensuring their safety, telecommunications of Fayetteville 911 dispatch have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas every day and night, the City of Fayetteville 911 telecommunications answers hundreds of emergency, non-emergency calls. They are a critical component of emergency communications and provide critical lifesavinging emergency services. They connect callers to emergency care and provide valuable resources to those in need, exhibiting compassion, understanding, and professionalism during most stressful situations. Now, therefore, I Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and on behalf of the City Council and more than 208,000 citizens do hereby honorably proclaim April 13th through the 19th, 2025, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. In witness thereof, I hereon do set my hand of the cause of the great seal of the City of Fayetteville to be affixed this first day of April in the year 2025, Mayor Mitch Colvin.
Council, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I was actually going to defer this to our new operations manager, but I see I got called out and came up here anyway. Um, I just want to say thank you. You know, we have some of the best 911 telecommunications in the state, actually in the nation here in Fayetteville. They do an outstanding job, and I appreciate you guys recognizing them tonight. Thank you.
And thank you again, Ms. Reed, and to all of our 911 operators. Literally, the difference between life and death, when we call it, they always there to answer the call, and they take hundreds of thousands of calls every year. So thank you for what you do. Uh, at this time, we, as we now look to acknowledge Child Abuse Prevention Month, I would ask that Ms. Faith Ballmer, Prevent, Prevention and Volunteer Coordinator of Child Advocacy Center, if you could meet me at the podium?
Whereas the Child Advocacy Center was founded in 1993 by a group of concerned local professionals seeking to coordinate services for child abuse victims and their families. And whereas the CAC receives 772 reports of child abuse and neglect during the fiscal year of 2024. 772 reports. Whereas child abuse and neglect not only cause immediate harm to children, but is also proven to increase the likelihood of criminal behavior, substance abuse, and long-term health problems such as heart disease, obesity, and diabetes. Whereas research also shows that parents and caregivers who have social networks to know how to seek help in times of trouble are more resilient and better able to provide safe environments and nurturing experience for their children. Whereas the Child Advocacy Center corporate coordinates a disciplinary and multidisciplinary team case reviews where professionals and multiple agencies come together to plan the best course of legal and supportive action for the victim. Whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of the partnerships created among citizens, social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, and law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Whereas our children are the most valuable resource, and every child is precious and deserves to grow up in a healthy, safe, nurturing environment free of threats, dangers, and harmful effects on child abuse and neglect. Whereas all citizens should become involved to provide safe, nurturing environments for children in all areas of their lives, at home, in school, and in the community, offering them the opportunity to grow up to a caring, contributing members of the community. Now, therefore, I Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the City Council and more than 208,000 citizens do hereby honorably proclaim the month of April in the year 2025, Child Abuse Prevention Month. And where, in witness thereof, I hereon do set my hand on the cause of the great seal of the City of Fayetteville
I just want to say a word of thanks. I'm John Webster. I'm the director at the, at the center. And on behalf of the center and the Board of Directors and the staff, we really appreciate the recognition on this, from the City of Fayetteville. It's a lot to be done. I go home every day knowing that this crowd has done a lot of great work for the city and the county, and it's an honor to be able to work there. Uh, and it is a team effort, and we work with all of our community partners all across the county, particularly law enforcement and social services, to do this work. And we appreciate any support that the city can offer, and this is a good step in that direction. So thank you very much.
And thank you so much. And astounding numbers, over 700 reported cases. So we hope that people will report more, but no offense, but I hope that your numbers are so low that they don't need the staffing levels that they have. So maybe they'll find something else to do, but uh, thank you for the work you do. Uh, at this time, we do, uh, would like to make a express, special presentation. We have a very familiar, uh, member of our community that we have seen in various capacities over the years, uh, representing Fayetteville and making sure that we stay informed. If the one and only Mr. Gilbert Bays could meet me at the podium at this time, please, sir. Mr. Bays?
Yes, sir.
He told me he, he's going to relieve me of my seat one day, so, you know, I'll give him, give him the key tonight. All right. Well, Mr. Bays, you know, for the last, uh, over a decade, since I've been involved in council, and many of us in the audience here today have seen your familiar face, making sure that we are well-informed in various capacities, from ABC to WRL, to now good morning Fayetteville. A very, uh, passionate community advocate to make sure that we're informed, that we're safe. You've, you've put yourself in harm's way on many occasions, reporting the news to make sure that we have the latest information. And as a community, we are very appreciative of what you do and what you have contributed. And so, as a token of our appreciation, um, the mayor and the city council would like to award you our highest honor. Says on behalf of the mayor and city council of Fayetteville, North Carolina, our city key and coin are proudly presented to Mr. Gilbert Bays in grateful recognition of his commitment to service and making a direct and lasting impact to our community through 17 years as a news reporter in our community. Is given to you this April 14th day, 2025. Thank you, Mr. Bays.
The meeting is going to last for about three hours. I, I had to write this down because it's emotional for me. It's a great honor. Have my family, friends here, um, taking time out to, um, come acknowledge this special, special evening. I came to this community as a Ranger-qualified Combat Communications Officer. In 1978, I was stationed at Fort Bragg in the 35th Signal Brigade. I take a lot of pride of that. I, I want to accept this key unto the great city of Fayetteville on behalf of several people. Allow me to indulge, please. First, I give thanks to God and the glory of God that I'm still here. I'll be 70 years old in August of this year. I accept it on behalf of all the service members and veterans who call this community home next door to Fort Bragg. To our broadcast family, WRL, WTVD, where I spent a combined 34 years on television, Mike Joyner, Lou Gillette, Lou Cherry, Bill Harkam, Ed Wilson, some of the photographers who have ventured out where you can see me if it weren't for them, and they never get any recognition, those folks behind the scene. I appreciate them. I've worked at just about every radio station in this town. I salute my friends from Beasley Broadcasting Group and my new family from Cumulus Media and News Talk 640 WFNC, our program director and Kenny Hitman McClain are here tonight. I appreciate you guys. To all the members of D103 FM, thank you for your support. I accept it on behalf of the educators in our community, the teachers, the administrators and staffs in the Cumberland County School System who have helped turn my children into productive members of the communities in which they live. Uh, to Dr. Marvin Conley, Superintendent of the Cumberland County Schools, and my personal friend and neighbor. Uh, Godspeed to him as he starts to head into his retirement. In memory of Dr. John Griffin, former Superintendent of the Cumberland County Schools, who thought enough of me to hire me as a community relations specialist, allowing me to produce great expectations, our television show that won the statewide recognition in six months after going on the air. To all the law enforcement officers who are here, all the sheriffs and police chiefs and public information officers with whom I've had the pleasure of serving and working hand in hand. In memory of Sheriff Moose Butler, to many of us, he's like a father figure in this community. To Sheriff Hubert Peterkin, God rest his soul, he was like a brother to me. To the families of the Cumberland County Sheriff's Department, David Hathcock and State Trooper Ed Lowry. I was one of the first reporters on Interstate 95 on that dreadful day when they were gunned down by the Gulf and Brothers. I remember Moose saying to me, Gilbert, we lost two today. And that defines the commitment that the members of our law enforcement community makes to help keep us safe every day. I accept it also to, for all the families of so many who have let me into their homes and allowed me to tell the stories of their tragic losses. Sheila Harriman, the widow of Chief Warrant Officer Stanley Harriman, first soldier killed in the war against terror in Afghanistan. And then the families of the children. Shania Davis, taken from a mobile home park in Fayetteville and murdered. Brittany Locklear, snatched from a school bus stop in Hope County, her killer never found. Zion Gibbs, victim of a drive-by shooting. The bullet crashed through the window of his home while he was playing video games, and he died a couple days later in the hospital. Genesis Dockery, killed by her babysitter's son with a handgun that was taken from a gun safe next door from the grandfather's house. Her sister Amari is here, and Uncle Gil is going to make sure that you get to swim. Stand up, honey. Going to make sure you learn how to swim this summer, okay, babe? To all the medical community, Dr. Jennifer Green, Director of the Cumberland County Health Department, and her staff who helped us navigate through tough times during COVID-19, during that outbreak. To the doctors and staff at Cape Fair Valley Medical Center who delivered many of my children. Especially to a Dr. Michael Zappa and the team at the hospital in the emergency room who took care of me and saved my life when I was hospitalized with COVID for nine days. To my family and friends, my karaoke family, some of them here, ready to sing. But we'll wait till Friday night. DJ McCray, my best friend of more than 40 years who's here tonight. Say, I appreciate you. We've worked together on several radio stations together. Many of you know his voice for Saturday, Saturday Night House Party. To my blended family, seven adult children and 15 grandkids. My daughter Angela's here, my grandson JB, if you can make it. Especially to my wife Doris, who's here tonight. Can you stand up for a second? No, stand up. No, I was just. That's our running joke. She has put up with me during long hours at work, me being in harm's way through hurricanes, tornadoes, flooding, always there with encouraging words, but understanding I had the job I had to do. And finally, in memory, memory of longtime Fayetteville Mayor J.L. Dawkins. He was like a father figure to many of us in this community and a comforting voice during turbulent times in our city. Like to thank Mitch Colvin and the entire City Council uh, for presenting this tremendous honor to me. It's not something that I take lightly, very appreciative of it. And I told Charlie Gaddy, when I was hired at Channel 5 in 1989, I said, Charlie, I want to be the Charlie Gaddy of Fayetteville. I've had opportunities to lead this community. When I went and covered the first Gulf War, all of my stuff was up on CNN Satellite, and I've had several offers from NBC, from Miami, my hometown of Philadelphia, to come and move to the next level. I've turned it all down to stay in this community. I taught at Campbell University for 15 years, and I told my students, you can do this job with a lot of O's behind your paycheck, but ultimately, it's about quality of life. We have good quality of life in this town, and so I stayed. Again, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Rangers lead the way.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert Bays. Special thanks to your family for loaning you to this community. And you said you're a Ranger, so go home and get your sleeping bag, because you will not get in her bed talking about her height tonight. So talk to you about that on Thursday. Tell me how it went. All right. All right. Well, Council, well, thank you so much for that, and uh, we were. you so much for that. And we were glad to honor those in our community who continue to do great things and will continue to do that. Counselors, we move now to next item of business, which will be the city manager's report. Mr. Hewitt?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. And it's a hard act to follow Gilbert, but we have some exciting news to share with the council and the community. If I could ask Tiffany Murray to come forward. City council, I introduced you to Ms. Murray at your recent city council work session, but I'd like to present her now to the citizens of Fayetteville. I'm pleased to announce that Ms. Murray has been appointed as the city's chief financial officer, and she joined us at beginning of, at the end of last month. Ms. Murray brings more than twenty years of public sector finance and accounting experience, most recently serving as a CFO in both cities and counties. She holds a master's degree in business administration and a bachelor's degree in accounting. And I'm so proud that she has joined our team and looking forward to great things from her as well.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here and to offer my supply to the city of Fayetteville, so I'm looking forward to working with you all.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, the last one I have is if I can ask our marketing communications team to come forward. One of the things that we focus on is on telling the city's positive story, and that is done through people like Mr. Bays and others, but it is also generated by the city staff, some of whom are here. And I think they have some swag that they want to show off as well, and I will let them take it away. Lauren?
Evening, council, mayor. Mr. Hewitt, thank you for inviting us up. First and foremost, I want to direct your attention to your screens. That's my entire team. Not everybody could be here tonight. But in front of my team are all the awards that we've won. This department has won over the last twenty years.
Wow.
So, I just wanted to show the viewing audience. I wanted to show that. And if the rest of the team could come up, I think we've got one that's in the back. But just for everyone's awareness, the marketing communications department is that silent gear in the background that just keeps churning out the city's story. We have social media. We have web. We assist with speeches. We have our own radio station, Radio Fayetteville. We have a TV channel, which we're live broadcasting right now. We do regularly scheduled programs for that. We do giveaways for events like the Dogwood, for other special events for departments where we support. We do outreach events, which we're going to upgrade and increase the volume and frequency of them per the city manager's guidance and direction. And we do ribbon cuttings like we did last Thursday. I say this because sometimes we have the perception that we are out there trying to fight the negative story, which is not the case. We are not always the purveyor of good news. Although we do like to tell a positive story, which Fayetteville has so many of them, from development services to parks and recreation, we try to tell it all, and we try to tell it all equally. Now, not every story is a good one, and I think we've seen some of those in the news. And I'm usually the guy that takes the brunt of those on the chin, hopefully for all of us. And so, with that, we have a statewide competition known as NC Three C, the National North Carolina City and County Communicators. This year, we were blessed by bringing home three second-place trophies, one for audio, which is Radio Fayetteville, one for regular programming for our employees' spotlights, which we get the honor of highlighting all of our wonderful employees from every department across the city, and then a public service announcement from the solid waste department, which is keep fire in the sky this Fourth of July to make sure that we don't burn our, our city down. And so, with that, everyone standing behind me normally stands in front of me. They are the ones that are doing the hard work. They are the ones that are on the tip of the spear, telling the city's story, and I can't take any credit without them by my side. So, we brought hardware home. I'm not going to say anything, but I'm not sure everyone brought hardware home around Fayetteville. It is a city and county.
All right, Lauren.
All joking aside, I came from the county. They are, they have a wonderful team, but since Chairman Devir was in the room, I thought I'd throw that out there a little bit. But with that, if I could have my team, who gets so little recognition, probably because of me, have a, have a photo with council, I would greatly appreciate it.
Everybody?
Great job, team. Great job.
Great job. Yeah.
Y'all put the tallest one in front of me? What you trying to say? Dino, you need to be on the front row though.
Thank you, Mayor, that's all.
All right. Thank you to our Maricom team. Great work. Many of you, we see the evidence of your work. We don't see you as often, but thank you for what you do, continue to promote and tell our story here in the city. Counselors, we move to the next item is the approval of agenda. Go to Mayor Pro Tem.
So, Mr. Mayor, I can make the motion, but what I did want to say, I did want to-
Oh, y'all had an announcement?
I just, no, I just wanted to put in context of what, what our communications team just did. We are the sixth largest city in North Carolina, so they have gone up against a lot of competition where you have Charlotte and Raleigh that are just triple, quadruple our number. So, I just wanted to put it in context of how great their award was. So, thank you again. But with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right. Yes, motion by Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second? Okay. All right. I saw various lights. Okay. All right. Second by Councilman here. Any discussion? All right, council, look to you for your votes. All right, motion carries. Unanimous. All right, council, moving to the public forum. All right. Part of City Council Policy One Twenty dot nine, this is a time that a resident may have input and a voice of what goes on in their city. Public forum will last no longer than thirty minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes each to address the city council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville, and no time will be yielded or passed to another speaker. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk's office no later than five P.M. on the day of the meeting. When the clerk calls your name, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address for the record. When the light on the podium changes from green to yellow, that means you have thirty seconds remaining to speak. When the light changes to red, that means your time has expired. Any remaining speakers on the public forum list that did not have an opportunity to address the city council will have the option to have their name placed at the beginning of the next scheduled public forum meetings list of speakers. With that, Madam Clerk, please call your first speaker.
Mayor, we have thirteen speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Mr. Eric Washington.
Evening, Mr. Eric. How are you?
Doing well, doing well. So, for those that don't know, I'm Eric Washington. I'm the CEO of Washington Apparel Company. We're a veteran-owned menswear company downtown Fayetteville. Since 2020, we've contributed to the Cool Spring Downtown District through craftsmanship, client service, and community impact. In December 2023, we launched the Inkspire Foundation, which is our five oh one C three nonprofit organization to empower the youth through mentorship and career development and fashion design. So, we've partnered with FTCC Mid-Carolina Workforce Development. We're partnering with an international agency called the International School of Tailoring, but we're doing some great things, teaching kids how to develop their own fashion brands and such. Now, we lease a space called the Clubhouse to hold our meetings and some private events for our donors, our fundraisers, and things like that. And we're currently, excuse me, we're currently applying for a mixed beverage retail permit under the private club classification. However, because we're a hundred and seventy-five feet from, from the Capital Encore Academy, zoning is saying we're too close to that school to get that permit. So, because we're not a restaurant, we can't get the permit, but the only thing holding us back is that zone. Now, keep in mind, we're in a location, a, a social district full of bars, lounges, restaurants, and things like that. So, we're just asking for your support and granting exemption to that pending your questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Washington. So, you know, there's a, there's a process that you will go through that, you know, if you don't get the response tonight, tonight is a public forum for you to, you know, just do what you did. But there's a process, which I'm, I'm sure the city attorney's office, where you make the application, and state law dictates the alcohol provisions. But just go through the process, and we'll look forward to-
Sure. So, I, not to cut you off, Mr. Mayor, I, I did go through the process. We've been actually making this application since January 2024. We've been denied by the zoning several times, and I got with my representative, and they told me that this would be the-
Yeah, you have to do an appeal. So, this is not, this is-
This is not that.
No, sir. So, so they can speak with you about that process.
Okay.
But it'll come back before us.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Jose Cardona.
Good evening, Mr. Cardona.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of this here council. My name is Jose Ay Cardona. I live at two thirty-three Addison Street in the city of Fayetteville, the Kansas City. Today, I want to talk three subjects today. One is the child trafficking in this, in the city and in Cumberland County. Child trafficking is out of control in this city. Child abuse is out of control in this city and in the county. The document that I'm passing to you around there is statistics of what's going on in this county. Ladies and gentlemen, we got a problem, and it's affecting our children and losing our children. Besides your so-called Planned Parenthood that's killing our children, every day that goes by, except Saturdays and Sundays. They don't kill babies on Saturdays and Sundays. Last time I was here, I talked to you about the Chermore, Chermore Plant that's polluting our river. I got a letter on Tuesday, the day after I got here. The letter's going around, telling me that I got to supply them with information about my polluted well, my polluted water. Hello, they've been sued five thousand times. The people won the suits. When is this city going to say enough is enough? You guys got to pay these people that you hurt, that they're dying. These people have been polluted with polluted waters since twenty-five years ago when I stood in the same place, and I talked about the polluted water, the same place that I used to go fishing, lot number one, lot number two, and lot number three, if you know anything about this city. There is a problem between the city of Fayetteville and Cumberland County Sheriff's Department. It was a big issue the other day on my birthday, that you guys cannot agree in resource officers for your schools. City of Fayetteville, you have got finally a chance to get involved with your school system that you don't. You need to put research officers from the city in your schools only. Let the sheriff's department take care of the rural areas. If not, listen, get rid of your social workers that you got in the school. Get rid of the other people you got in there doing the, what jobs that they supposed to be doing, they're not, and put truance, truance. Remember the, the people that used to be truance in your school? Where it worked for nineteen seventy, nineteen sixty, nineteen eighty, then all of a sudden, the education system put a, a, a thing called forty-four hundred. It's an article, it's like a rule or regulation that they got to follow for the children to report cheese. It's called absentee or something like that. Ladies, please get involved. The people are dying, the people are going to be, and the teachers, I also care of those same people that they trying to protect and teach. Please, one more time, take charge of your city. Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Crystal Maddox.
Good evening, Ms. Maddox.
Good evening. My name is Crystal Maddox, and I'm here tonight as a, as the president of Fayetteville Pride. Despite the belief of some people, we are not a political group, nor do we draw party lines. We have community members from all political parties, races, and religions. We are an organization that supports the acceptance and equality of all people. We advocate for the LGBTQ plus equality, and we work to create a community here in Fayetteville where everyone feels safe and respected, no matter who they are and who they love. Tonight with me is one of our board members and a local business person, Mr. Sean Clark. We do fight to promote hate against the LGBTQ plus community and our allies. On May twenty-fourth, 2025, we will be hosting a prom pride event called Pride Not Prejudice at the Art Center. It is with pleasure that we invite the entire city council to our prom. We would let you know that our sponsor, Mr. Clark, has purchased tickets for everyone on the council. On behalf of Fayetteville Pride and our sponsors, Rayford Flowers and Mr. Clark, I am inviting you all to the prom. If for any reason you cannot make the prom, we encourage you to give your ticket to someone in your office that represents you and our community. Thank you. And I'd also like to acknowledge all the people we have in the audience tonight and remind you that the Rainbow Community is twenty thousand voters strong, and we pay attention. Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Chaliko Hurst. Mr. Chaliko Hurst, not present. Our next speaker is Mr. James House.
Good evening, Mr. House.
Good evening, Mayor. How are you?
Good.
Good evening, Mayor Colvin, Mayor Pro Tem Jensen, and distinguished council members. My name is James C. House, Jr. I serve as an alternate member on the Fayetteville Next Commission. I'm a health and P.E. teacher at Lewis Chapel Middle, a proud father of three wonderful children, and a bonus starter, and I'm also a future husband. My background is in baseball. I play some good ball in my day, and that's the perspective that I'm speaking from this evening. I stand before you filled with hope and gratitude. It's a beautiful thing to see the excitement in the eyes of young boys and girls ready to step onto the field to play two sports that mean the world to me, baseball and softball. But I'm also here with a bit of concern. My bonus daughter Lola is playing softball for her second season, and her team was given only four softballs, four, and told, go be great. That's just not a, that's, it's not just tough, it's disheartening. How can we expect a team of ten and twelve girls to truly grow and excel when they don't have the basic tools to do so? Since moving to Cumberland County in 2012, I've grown to love this community. It reminds me of a lot of my hometown, Williamson, North Carolina. Back home, we had a place called Kahuki Park with batting cages, soft halls, areas, and bullpens that kids could use at any time. We also had a dedicated softball facility with similar resources. Because of those opportunities, the love for baseball and softball in Williamson hasn't faded since nineteen ninety-six. Why? Because resources have always been there to support that passion. Tonight, I'm asking for a conversation. Let's talk about how we can start an initiative to, to bring these kids the same kinds of resources to our fields in Fayetteville. We are in the heart of the East Coast and our city- We are in the heart of the East Coast, and our city is growing fast. With the right infrastructure, batting cages, training zones, proper equipment, we can become a hub for baseball and softball. Imagine national youth tournaments here being hosted at Segway Stadium or surrounding high schools in all the fields that we have. And most importantly, imagine kids at New Century Fields taking swings in the cages, getting better every day, because we made that possible. If we want our kids to keep playing, to fall in love with the game the way I did, they need the, the tools to grow. Baseball saved my life. I want Lola and every child who steps onto a field in this city to have that same shot. Thank you for your time, and I truly hope we can build this vision together.
Thank you, Mr. House. Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. House. All right, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Robert Walls. Mr. Robert Walls, not present. Our next speaker is Ms. Manika Geter.
Good evening, Ms. Geter.
Hey, how you doing? You gotta excuse me, little horse. Shout in that church yesterday, you gotta excuse me, sound like a man. My name is Manika Geter. I'm a parent. I'm not no CEO or none of that great stuff. This is my first time coming, and I was told this is the best place to go, so I hope my voice is heard. I'm here because I know that you guys are a different entity, anything dealing with Cumberland County school systems. However, my issue is this. I noticed that Cumberland County schools have a serious issue with calling law enforcement to get them to employ unethical to meet arrests. There is so much going on in our city that we need to be more concerned about than principals, teachers, staffs, and that sort, who are unable to distinguish the difference between a parent's crying concern versus just not wanting to take accountability. We're using our law enforcement to come to the schools because we don't have SRO officers there to kind of differentiate between a parent's concern or a parent that is irate. I have had those issues several times. I've had the police call just simply because the school and the principals did not want to deal with what's going on in the schools. They are not wanting to take accountability for bullying, things of that sort. So then you have the police. You call them because you feel like you're being threatened or you're being attacked, even without being violent, without using profanity, anything of that sort, they'll call the Fayetteville Police Department. I'm quite sure they got more things to worry about than to be dealing with people in school who don't have the competency level to distinguish if a parent is irate or not. And with all the things and all the crimes that's going on in the city, we, we need our polices on the street and detectives in the offices figuring out things. We already got, where I come from, I come from an area where some people in the African American community don't live, some do. But I notice, I only can speak from where I come from. I'm a product of my environment. And I notice that where we come from, it takes sometimes even 30 minutes for the police to come. And then when they do come, it's foolishness. You know, you had a body laid on Cliffdale Road for a long time. How is that when you got policemen sitting on Cliffdale Road to see if somebody going down five miles? I went to court for something. That was ridiculous. It got thrown out because the school system was unable to, you know, say, hey, you know, this person did no wrong. I was arrested, the police even was thrown off. They got dismissed, however, it came, it rippled from them. How is it that the police and whoever are called cannot, they, they only can come by what they're, they're called, they're only to do their job. That's what they're doing. But it makes no sense if they come out there for foolishness. It's time out for that. We have too much going on in this city, too much drama, and too many polices with nothing getting solved, to me. I can see it on the newspaper, but that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Kathy Greggs. Ms. Kathy Greggs, not present. Our next speaker is Mr. Benjamin Holtquist.
Good evening, Mr. Holtquist.
Oh, good evening. My name is Ben Holtquist from Strong Towns, Fayetteville, to talk about affordable housing, and I live at 801 Rim Road. Before we get started, I do want to address that on Saturday night, another pedestrian was killed trying to cross the street where there was not a crosswalk within sight of the intersection. But that's not what I'm here to talk about today. Last month, the Economic and Community Development Team held participation meetings about their five-year plan. In their presentation, they stated that the median income of Fayetteville residents increased 26% in the last 10 years, but the median home value and rent went up over 36%. The speaker also said they expected to receive about $3.5 million of housing allocations from the federal government this year. After she said that, everyone nervously laughed because they know what's going on in the country, and they knew that money wasn't coming. Regardless of whether Fayetteville gets that money, subsidized housing without increasing the supply of affordable housing will not solve the problem, and in some cases, could make the problem worse. Subsidizing housing, while important, drives up the demand for housing. If the supply of housing doesn't keep up with the increased demand, prices go up, allowing Fayetteville to subsidize fewer people in the future and hurting all non-homeowners who don't get the subsidy. This isn't just a Fayetteville problem. America, sorry, America has been playing musical chairs with affordable housing for decades. We chose to demolish affordable homes to build our freeways, parking lots, and shopping centers, displacing millions. At the same time, we made it impossible to build new affordable housing through restrictive zoning laws and bureaucratic hurdles. Strong Towns, an international urban planning nonprofit, has six simple steps that require zero taxpayer dollars to help reverse this trend. The first two steps are to allow homeowners to convert their single-family homes into duplexes or triplexes, or to add additional dwelling units or backyard cottages in all residential zones. If an owner wants to add more housing on their land, we should let them. The next three steps are to make new affordable housing possible by allowing smaller homes to be built, eliminating minimum, minimum lot sizes, and getting rid of parking mandates in all current neighborhoods. This subtle densification has the added benefit of not needing to build and maintain more roads, sewers, and utilities, or expand the coverage area of fire, police, and transit services. The sixth step is to streamline the permitting process to reduce administrative costs to building new home, to building new homes. These six steps will not immediately solve the housing problem in Fayetteville, but will make it possible to build affordable homes throughout the city. When combined with proper incentives, we can eventually get to a point where no resident needs to pay over 30% of their income on housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Georgiana Pinkney.
Ms. Pinkney, how you doing?
How y'all doing?
Good. How are you?
My name is Georgiana Pinkney. I am the executive director of Greater Life of Fayetteville. We are a nonprofit intervention and prevention youth and family organization. What I'm bringing before you today is a proposal for the Through My Eyes Youth Historical Art Display. What we do during our summer program, program is called I Am Unique because every child is unique in their own way. During this time, we take them throughout Fayetteville, Cumberland County. They select one historical area. We go back, they do the research, we show them how to put in a presentation form, from presentation form to art form, the way they see it through their eyes. And that's why it's called Through My Eyes, because it's individual. And what we asking tonight is for you to, to approve this proposal, whereas these young people artwork will be displayed in major locations throughout the city and the county, such as the regional airport, city hall, the courthouse, and also the arts council and the visitor center. What this will do with, is will enhance the young people confidence, and also not just the, the young people in, in Greater Life of Fayetteville programs, but throughout the city. This is an encouragement point for them. And also, imagine this, you have thousands of people flying through Fayetteville Regional Airport. You have thousands of visitors coming in, and for them to see young people artwork displayed would do such a great impact on Fayetteville, Cumberland County as, as a whole. So I brought a few of the young people with me, along with their parents, and this, she's one of our board members, another board member and parent back there. But I would like them to, to just share just a few minutes of what it means for their artwork to be on display.
Hello, my name is Makaya Shidman, and I attend W., and I attend WHO's elementary school. I am 10 years old. I enjoy doing artwork because it's more than just art. It is math, it's reading, it's science, and it's what I want to do. I enjoy doing historical art because, because it causes our city and displaying artwork throughout our community. We encourage not just me, but other kids as well.
And, and Ms. Pinkney, you know, we, we typically have a, not give you time to another speaker. I know these are children, these are babies, so I'm giving them a little discretion here real quick, ladies.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kamaya Smith. I am 10 years old. I attend Elizabeth Cashwell Elementary School, and I think art is about what you put your mind to and what you think about your art, not what other people think about it. I would like to have my artwork all throughout Fayetteville because other kids will get to admire my art, and they get to learn different things from it.
All right. Thank you. Very good. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you.
Hello. Oh, sorry. Hello. My name is Ariana Grant. I think I'm, wait, I'm 10 years old, and I attended to William H. Elementary School. And I think that art is a good experience for, for everyone in the world, because it's not about how perfect it is or what it looks like, it's about what you think of how you think it looks like it looks, not what other people think. And they, and that, and displaying our artwork throughout the city of our community will not just, will not just encourage us, but other kids as well.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right, our children are our future. Thank you, Ms. Pinkney, for that. Thank you to our future young leaders. We did allow a little discretion because we are encouraging them to do greatness in this community. So they spent a lot of time doing negative things. Tonight was a positive display of that. So thank you, and we hope to duplicate that over and over again. Thank you so much for that. All right.
All right. Three more. Our next speaker is Mr. Dylan Nye.
I'm a little taller than that. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as a really tough act to follow, but I'll try my best. So my name is Dylan Nye. I'm an active duty Army captain. I have been in Fayetteville for about two years. I know there's a lot of people here, whether through birth, by choice, or on orders like myself, that have been lucky enough, blessed enough, to come out to Fayetteville and call it home. I come to you guys after 10 years collectively of being affiliated with the U.S. military, and all 10 years of that time, I have never once attended a political protest, I have never once rallied or campaigned for an individual or a party, I have rarely, if ever, even with my own family, shared my political beliefs. That is not to say that any of those things are unacceptable or they're not encouraged for the average American, just to give you a sense of the gravity with which I embed the oath that I took, the bipartisan nature of the role as an Army officer that I try to fulfill. It's also to say, at the same time, I have spent much of my own money donating campaigns, I have voted at every level, from the national all the way down to the city level, and do try to be involved in processes like this. I also want to say, with that gravity embedded in these comments, with my first time speaking in a council like this, in the five states that I've lived in, across all the countries I've deployed to, that I come to you guys not with any particular request or any complaint or any issue I want to bring to you, just with a challenge. I have been lucky enough, in the year and a half, two years that I've been in Fayetteville, to be embedded with a lot of local volunteer groups, one of which being Fayetteville Pride, which Crystal got to speak about earlier. To be, again, so lucky and so blessed to have the opportunity to meet members of this community, like Crystal, like some of the other reps from the group, like the gentleman that you praised earlier, and were, I was blown away by the presentation on that and the things he had to say. I come simply with a challenge for you guys, as a council and as a mayor, from the national level all the way down, without giving any specific examples, because you'll know what I'm referring to, there's a lot of pushback right now on the concept of what it means to be an American. I stand before you, looking the way that I look, sounding the way that I sound, and sharing a pretty common refrain that you probably heard, that there might be a right way to be an American. Maybe that means looking like me, sounding like me, acting like me. I'm here to tell you that I'm lucky enough to be a part of Fayetteville because we know that is not the only way to be an American, that's not the right way, that there is no right way. I look at you guys as a council, I look at the people behind me, I see that there is every gender, every height, every age, every ethnicity, every so on represented. To me, that's what's beautiful about the U.S. Army, that's what's beautiful about Fayetteville. I would simply ask, without advocating for any specific policy, or without calling for anybody to get elected to any office, that you guys keep in mind, as we go into the next couple of years as a community, and we have these challenges that people are putting forth at the national level all the way down, saying that maybe it's not okay to be of a certain ethnicity, of a certain gender, of a certain identity, sexuality, what have you, that you keep in mind what it means to be a part of this community, and remember people who look, sound, act like me, and remember that we are in the corner of those who don't. Thank you so much.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Lizette Rodriguez.
Good evening, Ms. Rodriguez.
Hello, hello, I'm back. Yes, Lizette Rodriguez, founder of Full Freedom for All. I'm here to talk about the PFAS contamination. My organization, along with Action C, Organizing Against Racism, Kefir River Watch, Toxic Free in Sea, and some others that I'm sure I'm forgetting, all had a rally at PWC a couple weeks ago to shine light on a couple developments regarding PFAS. You guys might know some of this, but just to give the audience some context, you know, recently, our North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality expanded the radius for PFAS well-water testing to include nearly all of Cumberland County and five neighboring counties. And additionally, City View broke news that PWC could potentially lose over $80 million in federal funding to install PFAS filters, energy infrastructure, and lead pipe replacement due to federal funding freezes. And now, state regulators at the North Carolina Environmental Management Commission are considering a proposal that would make it easier for producers of cancer-causing forever chemicals to continue to contaminate drinking water across the state. And if implemented, the companies would be responsible for self-monitoring PFAS levels and their own waste discharge, and be responsible for implementing their own plan to reduce it. So that means polluters like Kamor's, like DuPont, that have been poisoning our community for decades that we know of, they are going to have an easier time to be able to do more polluting. And it, the, this Environmental Management Commission has actually said that industry lobbyists were responsible for proposing this law, or sorry, this new proposed regulation, and a senior attorney at the Southern Environmental Law Center called this proposal a shield for polluters. So all that to say, I noticed that this Fayetteville Observer reported that the city of Fayetteville announced that they're joining a nationwide lawsuit against the manufacturers of fire-suppressant foams containing PFAS, and that same fire-suppressant foam has been used at Fort Bragg since the 1970s. So our entire community is being polluted from all sides, from Fort Bragg, from all the way down to Kamor's. And we even had the city of Ashboro, who released one for dioxane, another toxic industrial chemical, into our water. All that to say, I'm hoping that, and I'll be going to the county commissioner meeting as well, I'm hoping that the city and county, and even the school board can all sign a letter together to stop the, or to send to the Environmental Management Commission about Fayetteville opposing this new rule in order to protect our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Mayor, our final speaker is Mr. Sean McMillan.
Mr. McMillan, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sean McMillan. I live here in Fayetteville. I'm an organizer and an advocate for community safety. I'd like to start by saying- and an advocate for community safety. I'd like to start by saying I stand in solidarity with Strong Towns, Fayetteville Pride, Greater Fayetteville, Freedom for All, and everyone here in affirmation of all the different ways we can stand up for each other. You all have made this one of the most impactful council meetings in memory, and I hope that we can all come to understand that it truly is all of us or none. I'd like to start with a quote from Sister Miriam Kaba, who says, "A system that never addresses the why behind harm never actually contains the harm itself." I'm here to call for the adoption of a Sentinel Event Review Process for Fayetteville, as was recommended by the now Governor Josh Stein back in May of 2023. Sentinel Event is an incident that may, if properly examined and understood, prevent similar adverse outcomes in the future. Governor Stein's recommendation came following the death of Jada Johnson at the hands of the Fayetteville Police Department. Jada Johnson was a twenty-two-year-old mother shot seventeen times. In June of the 2024, this council was in support seven to three. Back in January, after thorough presentation by the city staff attorneys, this council backtracked on a commitment to put this process in place. The only two remaining in support of the S E R were council members Andros and Benevente. Because, excuse me, weeks ago, the police-involved shooting of Isaiah Nichols was yet another Sentinel Event. According to recent reports, he is now paralyzed from the waist down. In the days following the Sentinel Event, his family demanded transparency. Now is the time to get a process in place to improve transparency and accountability. Since then, more than four hundred people have signed a petition on the Action Network, urging this council to adopt the S E R. Najah Hagan, Shakira McNair, Lawrence Graham, Trevor Smotherman, Kevin Grissette, Adrian Roberts, Jason Walker, Lawrence Artist, DeMarcus Brody, Joshua Oxendon, Justin Livsey. This is just a partial list of those who have died locally, the F. Police homicide or in police custody. I urge this council to stand in affirmation of our values as a community in support of this Sentinel Event Review, to repeal the no campaigning ordinance, excuse me, that criminalizes the unhoused, to restore independent oversight as a pillar of the OCS, and to bring the Deadlocked Resolution in support of our immigrant neighbors back to the table for a yes vote. We also have opportunities to affirm values in support of our trans neighbors in a time when the Trump administration is intent on erasure. It is a time to affirm shared values and work unapologetically in service to our community and in alignment to our values. We keep us safe, all of us or none. Thank you.
All right.
We have no further speakers.
All right. Thank all of you who've signed up for the public forum tonight. Councilors, we move to the consent item. Remember, eight point oh eight six, as the consent is approved. Remember to remove that particular item as the request of the manager. Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda Midas Item Eight Point Zero Eight Six.
All right. There's a motion by Councilmember Thompson, seconded by Councilmember Hare. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous by those voting. Councilmember Benevente is affirmative by default. All right, moving to item nine point oh, receive the 2025 Third Quarter Strategic Performance Report. Mr. Brayboy, Mr. Lowry, evening. Tag team.
Good evening, good evening.
Yes, sir. Good evening, sir.
So good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members. I'm Chris Lowry again. And joined with me tonight is Mr. Andrew Brayboy from Strategic and Performance Analytics Office. As we move into quarter three of FY25, we continue to make meaningful progress towards your strategic vision for Fayetteville. Across all five priorities, departments are aligning resources, deepening community partnerships, and translating your goals into actions. This quarter, we are proud to report not just progress in our performance metrics, but deeper community engagement, ranging from safety initiatives to improved housing access and youth investment. We recognize some measures are still TBD. These areas are evolving programs we are thoughtfully building out to ensure alignment and impact. We'll move quickly through these slides, focusing on key highlights that reflect measurable process, progress, and community impact. Our FY25 roadmap focuses on the five key priorities that was laid out on this slide here, which is violence reduction and mental health, affordable housing and revitalization, youth engagement, economic growth through city-owned properties, and city branding and communication.
Good evening, council, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. So council's first priority, this is our violence reduction and mental health response priority. And just to recap, some of our approved actions for this priority included identifying service gaps and overlapping community services, strengthening community partnerships and collaboration initiatives, and also, of course, developing and staffing an OCS, an Office of Community Safety, based on industry best practices. So looking at our first priority, the police department continues their collaborative initiatives with various community partners completing another nine initiatives in quarter three. Sixty individuals have also utilized our mental health services through our mental health liaison, and PD also remains on par with a twenty-minute response time for either mental health liaison or crisis intervention teams responding to a mental health crisis. In this regard, our Economic Community Development, or ECD, department, they also have launched the sixth round of the Community Safety Micro Grants. ECD also continues funding for peer support and mental health services, which ensuring sustained care and support networks for residents experiencing homelessness. And they've also expanded partnerships with, at the Fayetteville Care's Day Resource Center, which widens the access to peer support, mental health, and substance abuse treatment resources. And also, they're actively monitoring the development of the Youth Engagement Center at Murchison Road, which is a critical investment in youth well-being and violence prevention.
Priority two continues our deep commitment to affordable housing and revitalization. In this quarter, we hired a consultant to lead a comprehensive housing market analysis and needs assessment. This will guide our future housing investments and HUD funding opportunities. We've engaged the community through both resident and stakeholder surveys to inform our five-year consolidated plan and our annual action plans, ensuring the voice of our underserved residents shape the city's revitalization roadmap. We've also issued conditional awards to support development on ten city-owned, single-family lots for affordable housing. In parallel with our housing efforts, we're continuing our investment in Youth Engagement Center on Murchison Road, actively monitoring the revitalization of a commercial structure to serve the important community need. We've contracted a consultant to manage the Historic Preservation Grant in the Broad Hill Community, striking a balance between revitalization and cultural preservation. Staff also initiated support for the HUD Choice Neighborhood Grants application, enhancing our long-term planning capacity in targeted areas. Development Services continues to take a cost-effective approach by using ARPA and ECD funds for demolitions, intentionally preserving our general fund resources while addressing blight and enhancing neighborhood appearance. Notice here, we have twenty-two dangerous and/or blighted structures in the third quarter that was removed while sitting at eight point three percent for the funding allocated for demolition. We've also saw a positive uptick in the percentage of code violations resolved directly by property owners. This shift is encouraging. Residents are proactively resolving issues, which creates a stronger and more sustainable approach than enforcement alone itself. These efforts collectively reinforce the city's strategic focus, increasing access to affordable housing, investing in existing neighborhoods, and alleviating resident-led priorities.
To continue, priority three, this is our youth engagement through Parks and Recreation priority. And of course, this includes sustaining and strengthening our partnerships on Orange Street School, the Orange Street School Project, promoting diverse youth engagement and interactive programming, and of course, our continuous pursuit of STEM opportunities for our youth. Our priority is always to increase youth engagement opportunities. And one way we measure this is by increasing the access to those opportunities. The Fayetteville-Cumberland Parks and Recreation applied for a fifteen thousand dollar Fayetteville-Cumberland Arts Council Grant to support the Orange Street School music recording studio, and the results for that application is expected in a late spring. The Orange Street School restoration was completed in quarter three with a ribbon cutting on February twenty-seventh, and it will now serve as the main hub for expanded youth STEM programs, featuring a second-floor technology and art studio, a science lab, and also, of course, the recording studio. With this, the Fayetteville-Cumberland Parks and Recreation also applied for a twenty-five thousand dollar program support grant from ART to fund a new fitness equipment for the Tokay Senior Fitness Center, and the results for that would be expecting in the summer of 2025. For our juniors officials training program, we're on track to meet or exceed our FY25 target of thirty participants. And as you recall, this program focuses on life skills training, athletic officiating, and field and court practicum exercises. For priority three, ECD also continues outreach and program development for a youth nonprofit symposium, which is scheduled for the fourth quarter to include collaboration with our OCS. And in quarter three, staff at ECD also invested in low-to-moderate neighborhoods installing new playground equipment at Mary McDonald Park. And finally, ECD also continued funding with organizations focused on youth engagement and mentoring, focusing and reinforcing positive developmental pathways.
On to priority four, we continue to leverage city-owned properties to fuel economic development and address housing needs. Six private developers were issued conditional awards to build affordable housing on city-owned lots, further advancing our housing goals. In addition, we awarded a contract to, for a high and best, highest and best use study for properties located at Blount and Gillespie Streets, laying the groundwork for future revitalization in key corridors. We continue to make city-owned properties listings more accessible with our online platform and interactive GIS map, helping potential bidders view and evaluate properties in real time. A notable highlight this quarter is the increase in the total value of listed properties, driven by the recent revaluation, which raised the total from sixty-two thousand two hundred thirty-three dollars to a hundred thousand six hundred sixty-eight dollars. This enhances our ability to return higher-value assets to the tax roll and attract more competitive bids. Work remains ongoing between ECD and the city attorney's office, with ECD managing the larger development parcels, and the city attorney's office handles the single-lot properties. This collaborative streamlined structure continues to improve internal coordination, boost transparency, and helps us unlock the full economical potential of our city-owned assets.
And then our final priority is our city branding and communication priority. Just to recap, some of our approved actions include neighborhood engagement strategies, making Fayetteville's brand distinct, and also sharing the city's signature stories and more. Media coverage. We know this is a big part of our communication and branding for our city. Both positive and neutral stories rose from a hundred and twenty-four in quarter one to a hundred and twenty-nine in quarter three, far outpacing our negative stories, which was around forty-two to forty-four per quarter. This keeps us below our hundred and fifty negative pieces annual target, which shows us that proactive storytelling is working, but we must keep fostering positive narratives. We also know that from our resident survey, that our social media and our website is one of the biggest drivers for how our residents receive information from the city. So for social media, the city's audience grew from sixty-seven thousand in quarter one to seventy-two thousand in quarter three, nearing our eighty thousand FY25 goal. Our impressions also surged from one point zero nine million to four point three eight million. But with that, our engagement rates are down just a little bit, which shows that we need to be more interactive and produce more interactive content to boost conversations with our residents. We know that we recently launched our new website. So through quarter three, the city's website attracted approximately eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand visits, which closely approaches our target of one million visits for the fiscal year. We seen all the awards that our Markon Department has brought home and the hard work that staff is doing. So for video and podcast, video views soared from forty-one thousand in quarter two to five hundred and seventy-three thousand in quarter three, showing the strong appeal of the city's multimedia initiatives that Markon and our city is, our city staff is pushing out. To highlight and reinforce what Markon has already shown, our radio Fayetteville also earned an award at the North Carolina City and County Communicators Conference. This is one of the awards, of course, that we spoke about earlier. So what are our key takeaways here? The city continues to enhance its strong media reputation. Our social media reach is growing, but in the area that we can improve is in our engagements rates, which means that we need to produce a little bit more interactive comment, interactive content, so that our residents can actually have a conversation back with the city and with staff.
So as we move into the final quarter of FY25, our focus remains on refining strategies, aligning resources, and maximizing community impact. At the same time, staff will continue to strengthen partnerships, particularly in areas such as mental health, housing, and youth engagement, to provide well-rounded support across Fayetteville. In the coming months, we'll complete quarter four of the FY25 strategic plan and begin preparing for the next phase of implementation. Staff is also working to finalize action plans aligned with the FY26 strategic priorities previously identified. This evening, you'll have the opportunity to formally approve these priorities, setting the stage for the upcoming year's work. As always, your feedback from tonight's update and future discussions will help guide how we focus our efforts and allocate resources moving forward. Thank you again for your continued guidance and support. We stand ready to answer any questions you may have and look forward to your feedback. Together, we'll continue working towards a stronger Fayetteville, one that delivers high-quality services, encourages growth, and meets the needs of all who call Fayetteville home.
Thank you, gentlemen. Great report. Do have a couple of questions. Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. Mr. Brayboy, Mr. Lowry, you guys do incredible work. You know, our city manager, you know, asks us to trust and believe in some of the numbers he brings, and I do that because I know that you guys worked on them. So great work. Mr. Mayor, I just ask that we move to accept this report.
All right. Councilmember Thompson, was that a second or?
Question, question, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So Councilmember Benevente, is there a second? Councilmember Davis, you had the light pulled. A second. All right. Motion to approve and accept the report is seconded by Councilmember Davis. Discussion slash questions. Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Guys, great report. I wanted to emphasize the Parks and Rec part, and I was looking around to make sure Mr. Gibson was in the room when I asked this question.
He just got to work.
Because what's, and earlier today, there was a gentleman about youth athletics and softball. And me being a previous official, I'm all about our youth because our youth are our future. But you didn't mention the grant that we got to refurbish, to Reed Ross Track over there. You didn't mention about the money that we're going to put into the fields over there. I had a conversation with Mr. Wesley, who was here earlier, who left earlier, about them opening up the softball field that's by FSU, so that we can have access for our kids to get over there. So I said that to say that there's a lot of things that we're doing to make sure our youth are engaged in activities. And I want that gentleman, I don't know if he left or not, Mr. House, if he can get in contact with Mr. Gibson, because we're going to make sure that we get those youth, whether they're at Sentry or whether they're at Kowanus or whether they're at Smith, we're going to make sure our youth is taken care of in this community. Thank you, guys, for a great report.
Thank you. All right, council, seeing no further questions or discussion, I'll look to you for your votes to receive this report. All right, who are we missing? Ms. Paula?
Councilmember Mahndes.
Councilmember Mahndes, what you doing over there? All right, motion carries unanimous. Thank you. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, council.
All right, council, moving to 10.01, Public Hearing renaming the Woodrow Park to Haymount Park at Woodrow. The public hearing, we are going to hold a public hearing where City Council formally seeks your input. Individuals designed to speak at the hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before the start of tonight's meeting. We will begin with a staff presentation, and then we will move into the formal hearing. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for those in favor and those opposed of the item. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement a single spokesperson has been designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire 15 minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record, and you may then begin to address the council. When the light changes from green to amber, that means you have 30 seconds. The timer will ring at the end of your allotted time. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Gibson, our second shift Parks and Rec Director.
Well, I appreciate working the second shift. Thank you, Mayor and council. This was an item brought forward from the community through our elected official, Councilmember Green, and it's to renaming the Woodrow Park to Haymount Park at Woodrow. Just a little history behind here, in February of 20, February 3rd of '25, Councilmember Green presented the item. Direction of council was to send the request to the Fayetteville-Cumlin Recreation Advisory Commission. On March 4th, the Advisory Commission unanimously voted to recommend that the name change come into effect, which was the Haymount Park at Woodrow, April 14th. We're here now, and then the City Council policy is 1554, Section A3, City Council shall hold a public hearing. That's what we're doing now, and the public hearing was properly noticed in the Fayetteville Observer. What our options are is for council to approve the renaming. Second option would be do not approve the renaming. Third option, do not approve the renaming of Woodrow Park. Haymount at Haymount Park and Woodrow provides staff with further guidance. That is the report, and we can open up the public hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Gibson? So with that, we'll open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we have one speaker in favor, Ms. Sandy Parker.
Good evening, ladies.
Good evening, Mayor Colvin, Mayor Protem Jensen, and members of City Council. My name is Sandy Parker, and I serve as co-chair for Friends of Haymount, a local 501(c)(3) with over 180 members, whose mission is to preserve the integrity and charm of the greater Haymount area and to be a model community for Fayetteville. Our Board of Directors submitted the park naming request for Woodrow Park to be renamed Haymount Park at Woodrow to honor the historic Haymount District and provide a deeper sense of pride in the park. With me tonight is Denise, she's our Secretary on the Board of Directors, Denise Howell. It is our understanding that the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission has considered the request and, like he said, voted unanimously in favor of the renaming. I come before you this evening to request that you vote in favor of the park renaming. Friends of Haymount is planning events for the park, the first of which is part of our Haymount Wellness Project that we are kicking off, which will include yoga in the park beginning Saturday, May 3rd. We hope to improve the wellness of our community by encouraging others to get outside and enjoy nature and the green space at the park. We feel renaming the park Haymount Park at Woodrow would be an exciting way to jumpstart the Haymount Wellness Project. Thank you for your time and consideration of this request. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the park renaming request and/or Friends of Haymount.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Councilmember Benevente, you had a question?
No, I just wanted to commend the Friends of Haymount Park for organizing y'all's neighborhood the way y'all did. It was an interest of that community to make this happen, and I just commend you all on organizing so effectively to get something done for your area and for your community. Great job.
All right. Seeing Madam Clerk, any further speakers?
No, sir.
All right. With that, I'll close the public hearing. I'll go to Councilmember Green.
Yes, so I can make a motion now, right? Just want to make sure we're in order. I'd like to make a motion that we accept this request for the name change from Woodrow Park to Haymount Park at Woodrow.
All right, it's a motion by Councilmember Green, a second by Councilmember Davis. Discussion on the motion. All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, motion carries unanimous. All right, congratulations, Friends of Woodrow. Thank you for that. Thank you, Councilmember Green. All right, council, as we move to 11.01, Fountain Works FY26, Fayetteville City Council's Strategic Report Debrief. Mr. Brayboy, Mr. Lowry, let me just hear from you two.
Back again, back again, sir. So this will be pretty brief. It's just a highlight of the retreat that we had earlier this year. We have Fountain Works, she is remote, Ms. Julie. She will be presenting a short, brief overview and then show the five priorities that we agreed on, or council agreed on for their FY26 plan. We just need the go-ahead that you approve those or don't approve those, and then we'll get to work making action plans with staff. At this point in time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Julie. I believe she's online and ready to present, and we'll stand up here in case there's any technical difficulties. We have the presentation also.
Good evening. I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, manager, attorney, and members of the Fayetteville public. I'm Julie Brenman with Fountain Works and wanted to provide you a quick recap of the council's retreat and the strategic priorities that you set in 2025 for the upcoming year. So just as a reminder, you all held your retreat with three purposes. One was to celebrate the successes and accomplishments of the prior year. We also used some creative problem solving to help you be more strategic as you move forward and wanted the ultimate outcome of the retreat to be to create a concise list of ongoing strategic priorities that could propel the city into the future. So a couple of highlights of what you did, the top of the agenda is on the screen, and I'll go into detail on a couple of things, but just to refresh your memories, you also, in addition to what I'm going to talk about, talked to each department to hear some of the great things that all of the departments in the city are doing. You heard some of the foundational landscape that the city is facing in terms of the context you're working in, the budget you're facing, the cost of living that everyone is addressing. You also had a conversation with the Garrison Commander to continue your strong partnership with the military community. So just to highlight a little deeper some of the conversations that you had, we started with a review of some of the accomplishments that you all have led the city through over the past year. You recognize that you have top-notch city staff. You're proud of the airport development and expansion, the beginnings of the Office of Community Safety Development, creating that department. You've had the lowest crime rate in a decade in Fayetteville. You've increased wages across the board for employees. You've been emphasizing investment and growth around your economy. You've got a lot of new community programs, including a Mental Health Resource Center and new housing projects that are emphasizing affordable housing. So I know Mr. Lowry and Mr. Brayboy just shared some of the accomplishments that you have made recently with tangible measures, but also, it's always important for you to step back and reflect on all of the accomplishments you're doing. Sometimes you're so busy day-to-day just doing the business of the city that you forget all that you're doing, so you should all pat yourselves on the back. We also spent some time doing a creative problem-solving exercise to understand better how you all work through problems. The purpose was to tap into some of your different personality traits and techniques to better solve problems, because you all are problem solvers for the city, hoping to use the framework more effectively. Sometimes you need to stop and spend time to clarify what problem you're trying to solve before you jump into developing solutions and implementing actions and generating idea. So as you went through the work, you understood that sometimes you need to be patient with each other because you're different types of problem solvers, and that together, you're more powerful than each of you as individuals. We also recognize most of you are type As, go-getters, ready to jump and move, but want to make sure that you pay attention to the diversity of your problem-solving types as you move forward, and also pay attention to some stressors where some of you might need a little patience with others in how they address and approach problem solving. We also spent a little time talking about some strategic planning best practices and looked at the differences between what a comprehensive plan is, a CIP, and a master plan, a strategic plan, and then a governing body setting their annual priorities and department setting theirs. Some of the takeaways that you all shared after we talked through that was that you thought it was really important to keep constituents in the loop for strategic planning, so make sure that they're involved and hear the updates. You also talked about simplifying the strategic goal areas, that your strategic plan, to some people, might feel complex, so the more you can keep it simple, the better. And you also all talked about wanting to stick with a plan without switching direction every year, so you can continue to make progress on what you set your intentions on before starting new things. We also spent a little time doing SWOT, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats that the city of Fayetteville is in right now. Just, it's helpful to look at what you're good at and where you might need to improve as you look forward to where you need to address future issues. So I'm not going to read all of the things in the different quadrants of this, but just use this as a reminder that this helped set the stage for how you wanted to set your priorities. And with that, you all came to a conclusion of setting five council strategic priorities with one underpinning core philosophy. Four of these priorities are very similar to priorities that you set last year, and one is new. So this is the area where Mr. Lowry and Mr. Brayboy asked that you approve these priorities officially tonight, so the city manager and the whole staff can use these to guide how they set up their strategies and budget for the next year. So the first one is enhance economic growth throughout the city. The second is to have an ongoing commitment to a comprehensive approach to community safety. The third is to continue the city's commitment to revitalization efforts and housing needs. The fourth is increase parks and recreation opportunities for youth engagement and interaction. And the new area that you all added this year was to evaluate and expand transportation and other connectivity for residents. And then the underpinning philosophy that you talked about is that the city should be efficient, effective, and responsive in all that it does. I do also want to say, I listed them as one through five. They're not in a particular priority order. All of them were identified as your priorities. And so what's next? The staff would ask you to adopt or approve these five strategic priorities, and in parallel, the staff is working on developing short and long-term actions to support each of the priorities. And then, just for future thought, the council might consider a longer-term strategic planning process to align with the best practices. So with that, I'll turn it back to you for any questions.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Benevente.
It's moved that we accept the report.
All right. It's a motion by Councilmember Benevente to accept, seconded by Councilmember Davis. Discussion on the motion. All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, Madam Clerk, unanimous, thank you, Ms. Julie. Good to see you. Good job. Again, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Y'all made my dog eat his night. I appreciate it.
Robust budget conversation that incorporates all of these great philosophies.
Yes, sir. And I will say that we stated earlier, where staff will be working to develop those action plans. We will be bringing those back to you for adoption, and then we'll go from there and work with Markon to actually create the documents to bring back for full adoption.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you. All right, council, looks like that concludes it. Motion to adjourn? All right.